Good afternoon, this is the regular February the 11th meeting of the Rockport City Council. It is five o'clock. We call this meeting to order, we'll have a roll call to establish quorum. Ward one.
Here.
Ward two. That's good, ward three.
Here.
Ward four.
Here.
They are here, there, we do have a quorum. Do you join us for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are now going to go into executive session regarding section, Texas Government Code, section 551071, consultation with attorney, 551072, real property, 551074, personnel matters, 551076, security, 551087, economic development negotiations, 551089, IT security, and 5510745, personnel matters. It is 5:01 and we are in executive session. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, it is 6:21 and we are back from executive session, we're in regular session. First item on the agenda. Citizens to be heard. I have three cards for folks that wanted to speak on the subject, Mr. Nahfam.
I'm sorry, I can't wait until their item.
You can, you're entitled to wait until the, so the agenda item comes up or you can speak now. The, the agenda item is, is later in the agenda, it'll be a little while before we get around to the tree situation. If you would like to speak about it now, you're welcome to, or you can wait till we've called that item. There's, there's three of you going to speak, just come right here, one at a time. When you, when you get up here, give us your name and your address and you got three minutes to talk.
My name is Nahfam. Address is 1936 Highway 35 North, Rockport, Texas. And I'm here to ask for forgiveness about removing a tree without a permit. You want to continue saying, okay. Okay, um, the tree has been a problem for, for the last, I've been in business for 30 years and the tree been a problem all these years. It's, it's a safety hazard for my, for my tenants and for my, um, for the guests that come to our shop. And there've been so many accidents there and I just want to take care of business by keeping it safe for my tenants and, and the, and the general public. And just recently, in December, I get a lot of, um, clients from the nursing home and they bring a bus in there and they were trying to avoid hitting the tree, so they hit my building. And I don't want that to happen hurting anybody that comes around, so if they try to avoid the building and hit the tree, so the tree been a big issue for me. And I, I'm, I'm sorry that I cut the tree without getting a permit, I'm just seeing you will give me some relief on the fine, which is $6,000, so a little bit too much for a tree that's had that already.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
When, when we call the item, we may ask you if you have anything else, but have a seat and whoever wanted to speak next, the three of you back there, come right ahead.
Hi guys, my name is Michael Trent Flowers, I'm the nail salon next to her. I've been there five years now and this tree has been a disaster because I witnessed a station wagon backing up, slammed right into it, peeled off, glass everywhere. Tom and I had to sweep it up and one day after a cold front, saw a branch on the ground, picked it up after I parked, realized the bark was shedding already and I realized this thing is just slowly dying around this concrete and actually with the water problem right now, watering it, we can't do all that stuff. Try and take care of it is one thing, but if people keep hitting it, it's going to get worse and worse. And I feel like it's a hazard for winter Texans with the dooleys coming in with the big vehicles from FedEx and all. And if somebody gets hit by a branch, everybody in that shopping center is going to be reliable. We're all going to be in some situation we don't want to be in. So I agreed with the lady about cutting it down myself because I witnessed people parking there. There's a little yellow bar with black stripes, they parked there literally. Like a vehicle parked going to the massage parlor, can't find out who parked there. My customers are late coming in because they can't get around the oncoming traffic. That tree has been in the way for the five years I've been there, I can't imagine what she's been dealing with all those other years. So I'm just going to let y'all know how I felt for this last five years and what I've seen, what I witnessed all this time.
Okay.
Okay, appreciate your time.
Thank you ma'am, thank you. All right, Arthur Ulinger.
Good evening, my name is Arthur Ulinger. Uh, I have been going to the, the shop now for five years and the tree in question has always been a real problem there. As the lady who just spoke, it is, is in the way. Problem with that tree is that apparently during, uh, harvesting, one of the main boughs was knocked off of the thing and the whole tree has been slowly dying. And it is a very difficult problem in, in their parking lot there. But it's also a hazard, a health hazard, because those old trees dropped limbs all over the place. I live two blocks over from where their place is and those big old trees, like that, when they begin to get diseased and, and start shedding their, their big limbs, then they become a real, a real hazard. And they indeed had a health hazard there and I'm glad it's gone, it's just, I don't think that it's in the best interest of this committee to impose a fine on something they were taking both a health issue and a safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Yes, sir, I just, I have, I need your card in a second, could you come round on up, give us your name and you've got three minutes, yes, sir. Your name and address please, sir, and you got three minutes.
LT, LT Johnson, 1112 Redbird Street, Rockport, Texas.
All right.
Well, I saw what I feel like this might be my fault. So we're around middle of December, I pulled in there to get a haircut, it was recommended by somebody else a couple of years back, but anyway. Tree branches fell down just this corner of my truck, about three feet, just shattered. Part of it got on a porch and part of it was laying there, about a 10, 12 foot piece. When it hit the ground, it just kind of split it one part, so it got as rotten. But anyway, when I went inside, I said, you know, you are, see what a mess I hear, I said, that tree just fell right in front of me. And, uh, they come out and look and what have you. We got to looking up at the tree, we could tell there were several branches in bad way, you know. And, uh, that little gal Nah, she got excited, you know, says, well, what are we going to do? I said, we'll get somebody up there, cut them down. I often do it myself, they wouldn't let me do it because I, I'm 80 years old. But, uh, anyway, I think there was a little panic going on, you know, just a little panic going on. And I think they, uh, they got in a hurry or afraid or whatever and just overreacted and didn't know about a permit, I'm sure. And, uh, hey, they're trying to save their business, save their income, you know. And not, uh, get out PR, bad PR. That was a big tree, you know, it's probably a couple hundred years old, it was a big tree.
Yes, sir.
So I expect Harvey did some damage to it, you know, and it's just a matter of time for.
Appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Oh, you're welcome.
Billy Chatham.
All right, Billy Chatham, 105 Cherry Hills Drive, Rockport. I've been going to Tom and Nah for well over 20 years getting my hair cut and that tree's been an issue every, ever since I can ever remember going into that parking lot. The tree had issues, the tree wasn't healthy, uh, the tree, you know, when it, when they had to struggle to get insurance on the property, you know, because of the tree, you know, I just, I felt like, I mean, that, i- if they did anything wrong, it was not get a permit, right? They didn't get a permit, they cut the tree down. Well, if you want to fine them for not getting a permit, that's one thing, but for removing the tree, that is really quite dangerous to people, to the business, to everything. I mean, I, I just feel like they, you know, we need to cut these peoples, you know, cut them a break. You know, if you want to fine them, fine them for no permit, but for removal of the tree, I mean, I don't know. I think, hopefully y'all think long and hard about this, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Okay, this item is way down on the agenda, it will come back in a few minutes. We've got other things we ought to take care of first, but we will get back with y'all, okay? Next item on the agenda is presentation of life-saving award to Officer Richard Page from the police chief.
Mayor, council, um, we did have one of these life-saving awards just during our last meeting, I'm sure you remember. These are very uncommon, but we did have two separate incidences that, that happened very close together and they're both very worthy of, of the officers receiving a life-saving. So, uh, Officer Richard Page, uh, recently, just last month, on January 18th, and, and he, he conducted an act that's worthy of a life-saving, so I'm going to read this for, for yourself and for our public here, all right? On January 18th, 2025, you were on a lunch break at a local restaurant with fellow officers. You observed a group dining in a restaurant appear to get up, but quickly observed that one of the ladies appeared distressed while another attempted to perform the Heimlich maneuver. Recognizing the severity of the situation, you immediately sprang into action, demonstrating both composure and expertise. You took over in performing the Heimlich maneuver, successfully dislodging the obstruction and restoring the woman's ability to breathe. Your quick thinking, calm demeanor, and effective response embody the highest standard of public service and merit recognition for a life-saving award. This incident highlights your commitment to serving and protecting others and your readiness to act decisively in critical, life-threatening situations. Your actions undoubtedly prevented a potential tragedy. The woman you saved and her family have expressed their profound gratitude for your intervention. Your hero- heroism in this instance is a testament of your training, professionalism, and dedication to the community. Such selfless, courageous acts deserve recognition, not only as a reflection of your personal character, but as an example to others of the impact that swift and effective action can have in an emergency. I'd like to add that, um, Lieutenant Dodd, who's in the crowd as well, he recently, uh, has been certified to teach CPR for all of our officers and, and other groups within our community. And he recently put on a CPR class for all of our officers and they did, they did go over the Heimlich maneuver during the class. And so I believe that that no doubt had an effect on, on this action for the, for this incident. So I'd really like to congratulate Officer Page and, uh, the family and the, and the woman, obviously, are very, very happy with it as well. So congratulations.
Next item on the agenda is consent agenda, following items may be acted upon in a single motion, no separate discussion or action on any of these items will be held unless pulled at the request of a member of the city council. Do we have any requests to remove either of these items? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to have a second.
Call a second.
Have a motion and a second, any further questions? If not, we'll call for a vote and we have been joined by council member from ward two and he's with us now, Matt. Call for a vote, ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, unanimous. Next item on the agenda, these are, um, ordinances, resolutions and public hearings. Consider approval on the first of two readings of ordinance 1963, amending the city of Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter 98, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3, Speed, Section 98-5 and 98-61, and amending Appendix T-33, providing validity of said ordinance, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date, Chief Anderson.
Mayor, council, we've had, uh, two separate public discussions with the, uh, default speed limit and the possibility of lowering the default speed limit in the city of Rockport from 30 to 25 miles an hour. To my recollection, we had, we had no public comments of anybody opposed to the speed limit change. Um, the speed limit change will affect primarily residential neighborhoods and the only, only roadways outside of residential neighborhoods is going to be Stadium Drive, around the high school, Colorado, in front of the middle school, Broadway, and Fulton Beach Road in the city of Rockport. Um, those are the only non-residential roads that were changed, the rest of the roadways would be in residential areas.
Okay. Counsel, we discussed this at length, any questions regarding this ordinance?
The mayor said, had a few, few comments on, uh, a few of the streets that would, would be affected, that would be Broadway. Some time ago, it was 40 miles an hour and it got lowered down to 30 and then make it to 25. I, I get it now, you know, I'm saying Broadway right between, right at Little Bay Shores to essentially Keelagro Bridge and, and then around to Allegra North Condos to Fulton Beach Road. It being 25 miles an hour. Uh, I'm, okay, we're trying it, um, I guess we can always see if it's too slow because you, uh, as we spoke earlier, during the summertime, there is a lot of, uh, golf carts and, and maybe bike traffic and golf cart, stuff like that, uh, that do use that road. So 25 miles an hour may be better there than the 30, but not too long ago, it was 40 miles an hour there. Which may be a little fast now that the, the water's right there next to you, so that'd be my only comment on that. And, uh, the other one was, was Bay Shore Drive and, and Keelagro, uh, 25 miles an hour. But, uh, I'm, I'm open to hear what, what, if council has anything else to say.
Anyone else?
I don't have anything else to say, I mean, I think 25 is just fine, people are turning right into Keelagro, coming out. I know that can be an issue, so if that through right there, I think we just fine at 25 miles an hour.
And, and I, I personally went out and, and drove these roads with the purpose of driving 25 miles an hour. Been on Broadway, I've been on Fulton Beach Road and I've been on Bay Shores as well. And, and I drove these roads at 25 miles an hour. I don't mean to bring my personal opinion into it, but my personal opinion is that 25 miles an hour, even on these roadways, is inadequate speed, it get, it gets you to your destination, you know, it's seconds slower than, than what it would be going 30 miles an hour. It's, it's not a significant, um, time-changing, time-altering amount of time before you get to your destination by lowering that speed limit to 25 miles an hour while keeping the roadway safer.
Can always go on Market, it's 25 right there.
Uh, I know that this is going to be kind of like a phase-out program, you can't do all of the signs at one time. Do you have an idea of where you're going to start? And then, you know, that's something we can always bring back and readdress. If you have concerns with continuing to lower outside of those prime, you know, the priority areas, if it's just not working, why waste the money moving forward when you don't have to change speeds in all of the residential, correct? Can we do target areas?
At the beginning of the process, yes, we can do target areas while we get the signs and, and Ryan and his team are able to, to get those signs installed. So the way the, uh, the law reads is that once the sign is in place, then that roadway is that speed limit.
Correct.
So, so yeah, the, the, it'll be a process, um, I'm sure, I, I would estimate the, between six months before we'd even start, um, Ryan would be able to explain that better than I would.
Do you have, uh, area in which you plan to start?
It, it, it's something that we can discuss with Ryan and see where we wanted to start. Um, I, I, I would probably assume that we start in the country club because that's, that's where, that's where one of our, our biggest voices have come from.
Correct, yeah.
And so that would be my suggestion.
I only make the, the statement because like Brad said, he said, you know, we can always try it and kind of change back. If you notice that, you know, once you get to that area, it's, you just think, you know what, it's not going to work. Uh, let's keep it the same versus, you know, changing it and then changing it back. It's a lot easier to exclude one area versus having to go back and figure.
Absolutely, yeah, and, and, and as, as you hear from your constituents, if, if, you know, it's, it's simply a change to the ordinance, if, if we want to move one of the roadways to the 30 mile an hour zone, we have a, we have a section in the ordinance for 30 mile an hour roadways, and so it's simply a change to ordinance.
And if you'll just kind of keep in touch with us along that.
Absolutely.
Journey with putting all the signs out and everything and kind of give us some feedback once an area is established with the new speed signs, okay?
Absolutely.
I just want to clarify, it's roadways that you're speaking of, but residential neighborhoods do have to be, if we pass it, it has to be 25 in residential areas.
It will be, yes, it will be.
We cannot just pick and choose which residential areas to put 25.
Not, not the way the ordinance is currently written.
Okay, just want to make sure that.
Yeah, that, the way the ordinance is currently written, if it's passed that way, every 30 mile an hour roadway other than Market Street will be changed to 25.
Okay, want to make sure.
And if we're going to get to the point that when the signs are erected, it will begin to be enforced at that time, can we put on our website and everywhere else that's appropriate as those come up? So that people know that it's coming, I mean, there will be a story eventually here that says that we changed the speed limit. It would be nice if people knew when it would be enforced, so we can put that on our website.
Mayor, if I may, um, the timeline of installation is not going to be long. So once this goes into effect, um, it's going to take longer to get the material than it is to put them up. There's quite a bit of them, but, uh, you're, you're talking about two to five minutes for one. The, the infrastructure's there, it's two bolts, take the old one off, put the new one on and tighten bolt. So it, it'll go pretty fast.
And, and I was going to recommend to, to Ryan and, and city manager as well, that we, perhaps we purchase some more signs to, since we are changing our default speed limit to let the public know. Because we, obviously, we don't have a sign on every single 30 mile an hour roadway, uh, in these residential neighborhoods. And so the public's going to have to understand, uh, that these signs will be in the, in the major thoroughfares leading into these neighborhoods and with our, our, um, public notifications about the speed limit change being 25 in the city.
Yeah, I think it's important, it's just the residential roadways. Because I think a lot of people have had some misinformation, thinking it was going to be a lot of, um, additional roadways included in that.
And, and I'd also like to reiterate that I did during the public discussion is that the, the police department isn't going to go out and start writing tickets for people speeding, uh, in the residential neighborhoods. You know, i- i- if they're going 30 miles an hour, we're going to look for voluntary compliance. The officers will likely be making traffic stops, but again, we look for voluntary compliance. We have a process in place, uh, where we can issue warnings and educate the public for a time period.
Any other questions, counsel? If not, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve agenda item number 10.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further question?
Sure.
If not, we'll call for a vote, ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous, thank you. Consider approval on second final reading of ordinance number 1962, calling city of Rockport general election to be held on Saturday, May 3rd, 2025, for the purpose of electing two city council members, ward one and ward three, by qualified voters of the city of Rockport, establish early voting location, polling place for this election and making provisions for conducting reelection. Anything new on that, Sheriff?
There is nothing new on this ordinance.
Okay. Any questions, counsel?
I make a motion to approve agenda and return.
I have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further questions? If not, we'll call for a vote, ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Set approval of resolution 2025-06R, appointing the members to the tax increment reinvestment zone, board of directors for the city of Rockport, Texas.
We're going to table this item. Till the next meeting.
Ah, so, okay, passing on this until our next meeting. Consider approval of resolution 2025-07R, amended, do we want to go ahead with this one also? Or, my understanding is we have to wait till we confirm the vote over there.
I'm sorry, no, this is a different board.
Okay. Uh, to confirm the Aransas County Navigation District's appointment, convention and visitors bureau, board and establish a term of office.
Mayor, council, a few months back, we, um, pulled this, the hot tax advertising money into the city, under the city CVB board, CVB board that we established in talking with the board members and working through the process, we decided it would be pertinent to add an, what's it called? Ex officio, sorry, an ex officio member of the navigation district to that board, so that there's representation there. So that's what this is doing, is expanding that portion of the board and adding what will ultimately be, um, the harbor master. And we've talked to them and they're ready to join and everything, so that's what this is.
Questions, counsel?
I'm sorry, did you want, did you figure out who it was, just to see?
To add. Is it harbor master?
Yeah, not harbor, sorry, I didn't hear that, I followed up.
Yeah, it will be Keith, as long as Keith is the harbor master, and then if they have a new harbor master, we'll take that one too. Okay.
Move to approve item 12, it's presented.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any further question? Call for a vote, ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Next item, consider approval of amendment number three to the standard professional services agreement with Broadus and Associates regarding the project oversight, the new city hall facility for an amount not to exceed $45,900, Ms. Henry.
Ms. Mayor, council, thank you, um, this is being brought to you as a number three for our contract with Broadus. It is for an additional $45,900 and we believe this should get us through the finishing of the city hall project. As a reminder, Broadus is basically our project managers for that site. And we are still within reason for project management for a construction that size.
Questions, counsel?
Move to approve item 13, it's presented.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further question? Call for vote, ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Consider possible action on appeal, tree ordinance violation located at 1936 Highway 35.
Mayor, council, it was brought to my attention that a tree had been removed at the said location. So, um, I sent Judy from code enforcement out to look at the, um, area. Tree had in fact been removed without a permit, so we, um, sent a notice to the owner. We've kind of been talking through the process with them, so they received the notice. We didn't apply any fees or fines, so what we decided to do was to charge them what the permit would have cost. Um, we realized there might not be a complete understanding of the ordinance, so we just said on face value, if they were to come in and get this permit to remove this tree, what would it cost? That fee would have been $6,000, we estimated it to be at least a 40 inch tree, maybe a little bit bigger. So we applied a 40 inch tree, the fee would be $6,000. They appealed to me, um, I do have some appeal authority, I reduced it to $5,000. I think anything below that needs to come to you guys for an appeal. There's some issues that we need to be sure we separate. If the tree needed to go and if the tree was dead and dying, that's one issue. Was the ordinance followed is another issue. And then we'll have the third issue of, does. And then we'll have the third issue of, does the ordinance meet the intent of what you're trying to do with the trees in this town? So I'm coming to you completely neutral, it's in your hands. Um, you you guys get to decide, but I I do need you to keep those three issues separate. Um, whether or not the tree needs to come down is kind of immaterial when you talk about there is a process to take it down. Um, and then if the, if this specific example is outside of what you intended when you adopted the tree ordinance, you need to re-look at your ordinance, because whatever you do here is going to set a precedent going forward. So I would be happy to answer questions, um, I will be happy to provide advice, whatever you need on this one.
Okay.
Go.
Let me start, I am probably one of the few people on the council or city on these tables up here that was around when our tree ordinances were passed. And there has been concern about live oak trees on this peninsula for a lot of years. So the ordinance has been there for a long time. I meant to look it up and tell you when it was, but I didn't take time to get that done today, so I'm going to tell you ten, fifteen years. I was a police chief at the time, so it's been a while. Part of the ordinance gives you an opportunity, if there's a tree that is diseased or damaged and dying, if you notify the city, the city will contact the tree committee and the tree committee will come out and look the tree over. And if it's damaged enough, they can give the people permission to take a tree down, if that's what's necessary. And I don't think that uh, in this particular case, that was done, and it's possibly because we didn't know you could do that kind of thing. But the purpose of the tree ordinance is to protect live oak trees on the peninsula. We were told several years ago that there was a tree molar grub that was going around killing them, and within twenty-five years, we wouldn't have anymore. We still got them. Uh, but our trees are important to our community, and I understand from the folks that have been out there, and I have been in your shop and had my hair cut there too. You did a very good job, thank you. I I backed around that tree myself a couple of times. Um, my personal feeling is that if the committee had been notified, come out there, they would probably said this tree, if it was damaged during the storm and other things, that there might be a bona fide reason for removing that tree, but that didn't happen. And again, we're talking about three different possibilities here. Um, I sympathize with what you're saying. I understand the possible need for the tree to not be there. I am not of the opinion that the ordinance is worthless, and I think we need to keep up with that. I am also not particularly in the opinion that the permit fee should be as high as it is and possibly have some effect on your living that you're making in your shop, because I'm glad you're there. I will let the other council members have a word and we'll figure out what we can do.
Uh, just to follow up what Mayor said, you know, I've been a customer of of non-tomorrow since I was in sixth grade, so a a few years. Um, the, that particular tree, it was a beautiful tree, was once a beautiful tree, but that tree has been covered in concrete for about thirty-five, forty years when the previous owner of that shop, uh, that storefront, uh, built that that building. No other way is deceased, uh, but and then when highway thirty-five expanded, it took the parking away from the front of the building. And so all the parking went to the back and and there was more concrete was added. So the tree, you know, the tree had a had some issues, you know, oak trees don't do well when they're surrounded by concrete, so they do the drip line and all that. Uh, it does affect the health of the trees. Uh, I'm not an arborist, but I do have two oak trees in my backyard that are over six hundred years old, and I would do everything I could to 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 keep them alive. Uh, that being said, this tree is is probably one of those ones that that needed to go. Uh, there is a process per ordinance and uh, that process wasn't followed. The the issue I have with the ordinance is is the the fee, to get the ordinance, or to, I'm sorry, to get the permit, seems pretty steep. Uh, you know, for for a small business in Rockport, that's that's a real hit, just to be able to to mitigate some of that could be a a hindrance to your your property. Um, you know, reading through our ordinance, uh, we don't really differentiate between existing commercial and and new new development and and our tree ordinances. It's it's all just car plonk. So maybe that's something that we can look at moving forward, is that, yes, we want to save the trees. We we want to to be good stewards of of the beautiful, beautiful oak trees that we have in our community and save as many as we can. Uh, and I think we're doing a good job through the the tree ordinance and the tree committee at saving as many as we can in our new developments that are that are coming forward and and those developers and for that, for the most part, are doing as good as they can is is to move streets, move lots, move whatever they can to to save those big trees. Uh, so I I think the the ordinance is is good i- in that case, uh, but I do think that we maybe can tweak or maybe do look at it for, you know, these one offs, and I don't know how the best way to handle that is in a one off situation, uh, such as existing uh, scenarios. I just, I believe the 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 permit amount is is a little steep.
Other council members?
Yeah, I would agree with the same. Um, you know, I always kind of go back to public information, you know, like, when's the last time we put this information out? I know that the information has been put out, and I know the tree committee tries to do like a lot of public, but how often are we consistently informing the public? Um, I know mistakes happen, uh, I think the cost is extremely high. Um, I do understand the risks and safety issues behind it. If, and in my opinion, if a payment is agreed upon, I think it should be reasonable allotment. It's their livelihood, it's their income, it's going to affect their tenants as well. Um, you know, we say a hundred times over, we have to support small businesses within this town, and that's one of them. And I think that that needs to be a consideration we have pulled tonight.
So I'm going to give you some background on the tree ordinance. Um, I'm going to have a little different opinion over here. Uh, working with the tree ordinance and the committee for the last three or four years, uh, we made it very well known that we are going to change the ordinance because we did have a lot of new business coming in here and causing a lot of concrete and stuff, and that's why the fee was what it's at. And it's actually a lot lower than most other towns. Our fee is not as high as you actually would think it is. We actually looking, they're actually looking to make it bigger because the people are not, they're just paying the fee and they're still just cutting those trees down. This is a tough position to be in, because I can understand your guys' point, but at the end of the day, what we are arguing here is that the the process wasn't followed. You had a tree, it was cut down without a permit. And setting that precedent to have that done to me, I just don't feel like I'm I'm here to do that job, is to make sure that people are following the law. If I go speedy and I get pulled over and I didn't see the the speed limit, I'm still going to get the ticket. That's it's unfortunate situation. Um, I'm not saying that the fee has to be the the five thousand, six thousand dollars. Um, but we do not need to set the precedent of if you cut down a tree without a permit and you come in front of council, we're just going to let it go. Because I everyone else is just you that's saying that thing, and we're going to have to, we're not going to answer to be like, no. We're just picking and choosing winners and losers here. That's that's not where we're here. We write these ordinances, we do these laws, there's a reason for that, why we do them. Um, now to go forward, the ordinance has held strong, it's going to be going in front of the tree committee again here in the next couple of weeks. Um, for a new ordinance, if council obviously has invited people out in the uh, city can come and talk and see what they feel like needs to be done and changed or whatnot. But did work on that ordinance for a good three years, and we brought it in front of multiple workshops, we brought it um, in front of council, we made billboards. Um, so the information was very well set out there. Again, I'm not, don't want to pick on a small business, I'm not opposed to lowering it, but I am opposed to setting that precedent of letting that go. When you didn't follow the whole str- the way of doing things.
No, I agree. I, like I said, I understand that there'll probably be a fee placed tonight. We just, and again, the process wasn't followed, and I I completely agree with you that we do have to continue that standard. Um, I think there's just could be some considerations made with repayment.
I I agree.
Now it's time to talk.
Oh, sorry.
I I've got a, I've got a question if you folks can hear me okay. Uh, can you hear me okay, mayor?
Yes, sure, we can, you're right ahead.
Thank you. Um, I understand that there is a option or a some ability to waive a portion of the uh, permit cost if they will plant trees. Uh, we have, uh, I believe we have the ability to grant, um, the ability to plant them off-site, because I don't think there is room on that particular commercial location. That may give the uh, folks here that are facing that large dollar amount to to offset some of it uh, by planting trees in another location in town. I I believe that's an option, I just want to make sure that 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 is correct, and that the uh, folks that did not get the permit are aware that that is some assistance they can get as well.
So that's one thing that I discussed with Matt, if he was looking for alternatives, that we can look at some off-site remediation. Our ordinance currently does not allow for off-site remediation, I think it only has onsite remediation. But if you want to look at some creative ways to um, mitigate some of the cost that they're inferring, that certainly could be an option. But as our city attorney pointed out earlier, that's also where the money goes for us.
My concern with with planting trees right now is that water.
We can't water them.
Yeah, okay, so we're in that.
So if you put the money in the fund, we put them in a more opportune.
At a better time.
Well, any fee that you get goes into the mitigation, the tree mitigation fund, so it sits there until you are allowed to use them. Um, I, but you also have to pay on city property, you also have to find it.
Right.
Um, so there's a lot of.
I I agree with everything uh, Mayor for Tim said about the ordinance and it it was worked on a lot, you know, and a lot of people put a lot of time into it, uh, and it was not followed in this instance. Uh, I guess my 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 issue is is the amount, you know, the per- the permit, the fee, and that's that's where I have some sympathy sympathetic to the uh, small business center in the community, uh, it may just be a little stiff. And I, other than that, I I I agree with what with the ordinance.
Do you guys have a solution, what you're thinking?
I I would be okay with with reducing it to uh, to a thousand dollars. Uh, and and move forward. At that time. And now how we mitigate any kind of trees, I don't know if you just use that time for future planning or?
It would just go into the tree fund and then whatever the mitigation method approved by the tree ordinance would, is what that money would be spent on. If you want them to do additional mitigation, I would say we got to wait till planting season rolls around, if that's what you want to require.
Is there a legal means, you know, to the differ- differentiate, differentiate uh, you know, existing, so I put in the, for this instance, versus new development? Uh, you know, I I think we're doing a good job on the new development, but.
So let me give you a scenario, when is the new development not new anymore? Example, right next door, the car wash, the blue wave car wash, there's the, I don't know, you would think it's a hundred inch tree, but whatever it is, it's sixty, eighty inches. They redesigned their site plan to avoid the tree. Next month, after they're built out, they decide they don't want the tree, and they cut the tree, they're not a new development anymore. They don't follow the ordinance, but we've lost an eighty-four inch tree. What's going to be your solution then?
And just, your ordinance actually does differentiate between what is new development and what is remodeling or uh, changes on an existing site. Um, that's one oh six dash thirty of your code ordinances, so you've already taken that into account. Okay. This, you know, and and obviously, this is not, this is not new construction that we're talking about here on this piece of property. That was uh, that was, it's not, it's not anybody.
Right. I'm just saying, even the new stuff becomes existing at what, you know, if you didn't cut it out in the construction, it's not new.
And I also want to make this clear, that it's not, it wasn't a tree, it was a live oak, which is a protected tree in our ordinance. So if it was a different tree, obviously, the situation would not be where you're at. Um, it was a forty inch tree, it was a very large tree, and I'm not, again, if they could have, it would cost them a lot less if they would have had someone just come and look at the trees, if it was dying, had it cut down, um, paid just to get it cut down. If it was damaging, um, I don't, I don't know what the damage part is in our ordinance, right, or is it just the dying dead part?
Yeah.
It's just the dying dead, but if it was dying, I don't think you pay that tree fee, I think you're allowed to cut it down. It would have been zero dollars except for you're cutting it down. Um, yeah, I don't like being in this position all the time, but if you didn't follow the process, I think we have to keep up that a thousand dollars, to me, seems a little low. But I will go with counsel's recommendation tonight, and I just want to make sure that we, for future, that we make sure that people know about our ordinances, every single one of them. That's only we're hard to get them done, that's why we vote on them, let's just keep it that way.
And to Stephanie's comment, we can certainly work and push out more and more often. Ian, it, I mean, it brings up how often do we push out our ordinances, but you know, we can, we can certainly do that if that's your request.
It's certainly a a difficult situation, I understand why you're here. Um, there is obviously a difference in somebody that buys a piece of property and goes out, cuts all the trees off of it, somebody that takes down a tree that's in their back lot for whatever reason may be. Um, but we still have an ordinance. Do you care to make that thousand dollars a form of motion?
Uh, please, uh, write that motion, do that, please.
I'm sorry?
They're wanting to know what it is.
I think I got two people who want to speak.
Yeah, I'm 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 just standing for a while, I might.
Well, if you'd been here to s- pick up one of the forms and fill it out, it'd been okay, come on up.
My name is Calvin Sholz. Uh, lived in Rockport for about fifty years now, I purchased property next to the Rockport Bakery Cafe here uh, for the sole purposes of preserving an oak tree, so I'm a tree lover. Uh, but listening to what's here, considering it, I have personal knowledge of the tree in question. Uh, and analyzing the ordinance, the ordinance has a purpose. The purpose is to preserve maybe a healthy tree or one that's apt to make it. The facts here seem to indicate pretty clearly that the purpose here of preserving a tree that was going to die on its own soon isn't there. If the purpose is not there, process becomes immaterial. And if there is a fine or a cost levied for a process violation, then that turns the statute into a penal statute. It's not a penal statute. And I think since the purpose is not there, the process is not relevant, and I think with all due consideration, a tree lover such as myself, it it should be passed.
Amen.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm Jerry Ivy, I'll.
Come up here, give us your name, your address and so forth.
Sorry, I just got off work.
Sure.
Um, I'm Jerry Ivy, I own Janium Solutions, and I've dealt with a lot of the permits, and I've, it's always been easy and it worked with you. From two thousand to about two thousand and three, I worked for Center Landscaping, and every winter, all we did was trees. And everybody knows Rockport, their trees and that, but what none of them I've learned know is on their property, they can't cut their own trees down. They they know you're protecting them, but they don't know that, and like that tree there, the branch had fell on my truck about two thousand twenty-two, I think. And uh, I told them, hey, I need to get that thing cut. And this ain't people, this ain't some contractors out there trying to skip a permit, cut a tree, make a little money. This is an older couple just trying to get this thing out their way uh, for their business. This is an older couple just trying to get this thing out their way for their business. So I understand, like y'all said, rules are rules, but the rule wasn't made for someone trying to do it the way it was. It was made to keep people from trying to be slick and do stuff that they're supposed to. Everybody pretty much know that tree was dying. There was no grass, there was no way to get water, it was covered in concrete, it would fall on trees. I mean, if it would have fell on a little kid or something, you know, it was a dangerous tree. And I understand there are rules, but I just, people sometimes they step back and realize this was a couple on their off time just trying to get it out the way. They weren't trying to be slick, they weren't a contractor trying to skip or making some money. They were trying to save other people the hassle of doing it and doing it themselves. And everyone I grew up with, that's how they did it. So that's just all I had to say.
Thank you.
Can I just make one more comment? I appreciate what you guys are saying. Again, we are not here to pick winners or losers, that's, that, that starts a dangerous game down the road. I, again, nice couple, you guys have obviously a strong, honest community, you know lots of people, I appreciate that. But if we, if it was a dying tree, we are supposed to get a certified artist to come out and look at that tree that determined it died, that is in our ordinance and that ordinance was set to have that information. If you didn't do that, then you're going to get fined and that's anyone that goes out there and does that in this community, business owner, anything. So I just want to make that clear, that this is not picking on this person or doing this. We are following the ordinance, following the process and we have to make sure we hold everyone accountable if they're not doing that. It's, it's that simple to me, so I just want to make sure that, that you understand that. If the tree was dying, it could have been just as simple as getting a certified artist to come out there and take a look at it, say it's dying. It would have cost them nothing except for getting that tree cut if they would have said yes. Just want to make sure that was clear again. Do you need a motion there?
The issue I think here is, is what do you do in the event that, that there is an unintentional violation of an ordinance? And I will agree that that is what we have here. It would have been very simple if somebody had made a phone call to get that tree removed, very likely. But it wasn't. I am not happy with the possibility that it could cost somebody six thousand dollars for a permit for a tree that probably should have been taken down. I'm not, it's, there should be some provision somewhere for that, I agree with you. I agree with Mayor Pro Tim, she has been dealing with the tree ordinance growth folks committee for a long time. And it is very special to her and I agree. I, when, when I was the police chief here and we had these things come up, I used to think trees and they're on my lot. But there are a lot of trees removed from, from property around here that damaged sections of land that, that had all sorts of drainage problems and things because the trees were gone. And we were told at one time they were all going to die off anyway. I, I think that the six thousand dollars is excessive. I believe that there has to be some sort of a number that says you still violated the ordinance, whether it was intentional or not, but I'm not happy with a six thousand dollar permit fee.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Matt.
And I apologize, I can't tell if Art is there or not, but I'd like to get Art's opinion from a legal perspective. When we have a, what appears to be a very unique situation of an unintentional infraction of a ordinance, do we have the ability to make a unique decision that, you know, addresses the, the one time, the one off situation without setting a precedent that can be legally used against not just this council, but all future councils? Art, can you comment? Do we have the ability when there's a unique, very unique situation to, to consider a, a reduction like Brad was talking about, sir? Can you give us some advice there?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, Councilman. The ordinance itself provides for an appeal process from the decision that was made by the city manager. So in this, so the council has already thought about the process of whatever her decision is, it being brought to y'all for an alternate, potentially an alternate decision being made. So the ordinance in and of itself contains that process, which is what's before you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm going to make a motion. In consideration of the, the appeal for the tree ordinance, I would like to set the permit slash, what do you call it, permit fee or fine? The permit fee, permit fee for the violation or for the tree being removed in nineteen thirty-six Highway thirty-five North at a thousand dollars.
I have a second.
I have a second, sir.
Have a motion and a second, any further question? Now I'll call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Reports to city manager. Reports from council.
I have nothing, first night speaking, or?
Matt?
Nothing from me tonight, thank you.
Ward three.
Uh, we've got LaMardi Gras coming up. It's not in city Rockport, that's a little bit further outside the city limits, but I believe it's this weekend, is that right?
I'm not sure, I think you're right.
Yes, this weekend, out at, around Fulton Fire, uh, sorry, Lamar Fire Station. And there was a real nice health and health fair this morning out in Fulton. Hopefully that was attended well. Let's see, what else do we have coming up? I believe that'll be it for now, Mayor.
Okay, Ward four.
I just went to the HOA meeting for the Rockport Country Club, discussed the speed limit that will be coming up and they were happy with Chief and just very ecstatic with the information that was put out. And we had the CVB meeting yesterday. We're looking to work with local marketing teams and then they're going to hold a couple of different meetings for social media managers and a fishing captains.
There will be eight different groups.
Eight different groups to come and just give their input. We need to go into summer and fall, or sorry, spring and summer advertising, so we need to start going on that and we're hoping to hire someone soon, we've got some vacations and some good ones, so there, it's about it.
I have nothing to report. Have a motion, I have a second.
Sorry, I have a second.
Have a motion and a second, we're adjourned.